All the meeting of the city council order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted, there is a quorum of council. Everyone's here, I understand that councilwoman Ford may have had a death in the family and our thoughts and prayers are with her. If that's in fact, we find out more, we'll let you know. But if at any time, our assistant city manager Scott Elmer will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand and join me in the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got some presentations to make here, huh?
It's only one minute, but probably I don't want to mumble because my wife is sitting there. Honorable Mayor, Mr. Allen Owen, distinguished city council members and citizens. My name is Koshi Thomas, the publisher and CEO of the Voice of Asia News Group. I proudly say that is the largest Asian-American publication in Texas.
So you can't be used for the...
Before I forget, because as I said, and I have to go back home also, my wife is here, she's my life partner for 54 years, and my most trusted marketing director Susan Fodak, who's also here. I consider this as an honor to stand in front of this distinguished mayor for 24 years, am I right? 24 years, the city council members, and present him with a plaque bearing his name, a lifetime achievement award that we covered in our news weekly. I want to thank the mayor for this privilege. I consider it as an honor and a privilege to present in the presence of the honorable council members and distinguished citizens of Missouri City. I know mayor for over 24 years, that is since 1994, he took charge as the mayor of this place, and mayor will be with our community whenever we wanted something, whenever there is a function or an event, just sent an invitation, he will be there forgetting even the dinner up there, with a great smile and gracious words for the people. I know recently, we all have faced a lot of struggle and distress during the Harvey time, but because of leaders like him and his leadership, we will come across all those troubles. I thank him and wish him many more blessed years to read the city and do more greater things for the people. I thank you and God bless you.
This is the plaque.
That I'm going to present.
Speech.
No.
No. Speech, no. Don't speak. I'm just playing.
The Brazos River check presentation. Presentation of a check by the Brazos River.
Oh, there he is, he's coming with the money.
I know this guy.
Man, that's a Slim Don Smith.
That's him, that's Don.
Is that Don?
State your name and address.
It's Jason Mangeman, is he here? Okay. Oh, okay.
You're talking to the people or to the chair of the party?
Yes, he is. Good evening, mayor, council, staff. It's a pleasure to be here to represent the Brazos River Bike Rally. Just to give you a bit of information, the Brazos River Bike Rally started about three years ago to, number one, just to promote bicycling in the city of Missouri City. And can I ask, my son just got off a plane, I guess he got an Uber or something to get here. Shall I continue with this? Do you want me to? The Brazos River Bike Rally started about three years ago to promote bicycling in the city of Missouri City and the surrounding areas. In addition to that, the city had a bicycle mobility and pedestrian initiative, and I thought it was appropriate to kind of merge those two together to really promote bicycling in the city of Missouri City. Progressive cities have alternate ways of transportation and also alternate means of exercise and living in a healthy lifestyle. Again, like I mentioned, we started about three years ago. And this year, we feel pretty good about the way the bicycle rally went. We had just a little under 300 riders, and it went very well. We planning to have significant amount more than the 300 riders that we had this year, and I really believe that will happen. So with that being said, I would like to present a check for $1,000 to the Missouri City Parks Foundation. Yeah, and I would also be remiss in not mentioning Pam Andrews, who's a member of Missouri City Green, and she's helped us all along the way. So Pam, thank you very much. The three principals of the Brazos River Bike Rally, myself and Charles, and also some of you may know Derek in the back there. Again, thank you very much.
Don, is that to be directed towards the Veterans Memorial, your favorite part of it?
Well, I figured you would bring something, you would bring it up there, so absolutely.
As long as it's your wish.
Thank you, it's exciting for us.
That better picture, that's a better picture now.
Yeah.
See you, council member.
Very nice, we like getting checks. All right, we've got Missouri City Green up. Come on, Pam.
You can always see our shirts, right?
We know you're coming.
Amazing.
We want you all to know we're here. Well, council mayor and wonderful honored guests, we are here again to recognize a wonderful company that is working on making us beautiful, and it's the Millis Development and Construction Company. How many of you all have heard of that company? Anybody? Thank you. One of the things about this company is that they do all kinds of work, and they specialize in doing things like parks. I think you all have heard of Buffalo Bayou Park, they've also done the Riverstone Rec Center in Missouri City, Ontario, am I pronouncing that correctly, and Cross Creek, and also Midtown Park. Just to give you an idea of their diversity and what they do, but whenever they have extra supplies, they bring them back to their office site here in Missouri City. And if you want to see a place to work that is absolutely gorgeous, that where you can go clear your mind and look at nature, you want to go see Millis. It is absolutely gorgeous, and it really is. We had the pleasure of having a tour of the facility last week, just to see what all they do, where they take surplus from their various sites where their employer no longer wants it, and they bring it back to the site and make all kinds of things, from picnic benches, to trails, to lakes, and what else? Waterfountain, oh, tell them about, I'm going to let her tell you about the water fountain, oh, the fountain. She explained it so well to us. But it is a beautiful site, and it makes Missouri City beautiful. And one of the things about Chad Millis, and this is a family-owned company by the way, Jason and Chad Millis, but one of the things I found on their website, which I found very interesting, is that he believed in using resources that he has, give them a purpose. He is also lead certified, so you know he has the right focus. So with no further ado, we want to present the Golden Tree Award to the Millis Development and Construction Company.
Thanks.
No, it's setting back.
Do you want to say anything?
I would hate to.
Go ahead.
I would hate to speak on behalf of Chad or Jason, unfortunately, they couldn't be here, but we thank you all so much, and something Chad did say was a part of coming to Missouri City, because we were in Sugar Land, was he wanted to help Missouri City grow, and he wanted to make it even more beautiful than what they thought it was. So we continue to try to make it better, and hopefully you all see us more out there. Thank you all.
Most people have probably never even seen it.
Do they, would you all like to know where it is?
Yeah.
When you all come up 2234 and you make a ride on 90, do you remember why Keen had all the land that he didn't cut?
Right.
You know there's a building way back on the street, did you miss seeing that building? That's the Millis Development and Construction Company, guys. If you ever get a chance to ride through, you'll see how beautiful it is.
It is, it's really nice. Thank you, Pam, thank you for recognizing them. All right, item four, public comments, I did not have anyone sign up for public comments other than those that have signed up for agenda items. Item five, the staff report, councilman or city manager.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. I hope all of you enjoyed your great weekend. City officials and staff continue to collaborate with agencies in regards to Hurricane Harvey's recovery. In the past weeks, our mayor has participated in several official meetings discussing recovery efforts, housing needs, responses from other agencies such as the American Red Cross, how the flooding impacted the area, and the timing of our FEMA reimbursement for municipality citizens as well as businesses. The mayor was invited to, by Senator Ted Cruz, to give testimony in Washington on Hurricane Harvey's impact on the city with the Senecomerce Committee last week, and we actually put that full video on our city's website, and I encourage our citizens to go and watch our mayor testify. He also participated in a congressional hearing by the Homeland Security Committee on lessons learned regarding the hurricane. Mayor Owen also was asked to testify before the committee by, he was invited by Representative Al Green, and really, the focus was how Hurricane Harvey and other similar emergencies impact small cities. I'm happy to say that based on that testimony, we've already heard, got a number of responses from FEMA, and we hope that some of the requests that we've made would be expedited and we'll be able to get some of that funding to our community. We are currently conducting the 2018 citizen survey on this week. It will be administered through the nationally recognized ETC Institute via phone, mail, as well as the internet. ETC will mail the survey and a city-approved project description letter to a random sample of households. The residents will be provided two convenient opportunities to respond, an online link that will be included in the letter, and a postage-paid return envelope. Our goal is to achieve a minimum of 400 completed surveys, and the survey findings will be submitted to the city in late May. And our hope is that we'll be able to utilize some of that information as part of our budget development. A number of quick reminders regarding current and upcoming initiatives. Our city auction is currently live, preview day is tomorrow, and the auction will close on Thursday, April 17. Our city, our state of the city address is on Thursday, April 26. It will be here at 11:30 in our community center next door. Our registration is now open. A paper shredding event in partnership with Missouri City Green is on Saturday, April 28 at 9:00 a.m., and that will be held at our public safety headquarters. The Drug Takeback Day is scheduled for Saturday, April 28 at 10:00 a.m., and that will also be held at our police department. The 2018 Police and Fire Academy will begin on May 8, and applications are currently now open. Classes will be held every Tuesday and Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at the police safety headquarters. The Second Annual Mother's Day Cake Decorating Event will be held on Saturday, May 12. I would remind everyone that was, the first one was a tremendous success, it was a packed house at our community center. This year again, May 12 at 10:00 a.m. will be held in our community center. This year's event will include a flower station, face painting, photo booth, and more. Registrations will open on this week. Lastly, as relates to our upcoming initiatives, the fire and rescue services will be hosting a fire station open house at Fire Station 3 on Saturday, May 19 at 10:00 a.m. Residents are welcome to meet our firefighters, tour the facilities, and enjoy a day field of fun activities. Finally, I'd like to recognize and thank the following partners. The Sugar Creek Baptist Church for bringing pastries to our firefighters at Station 1, Jennifer Ogilvy of Methodist Day School, Iris McAfee of Dulles High School, and Fort Worth, I'm sorry, Fort Settlement Middle School, National Junior Under-Society Members, and other residents who have helped our animal shelter with donations. We encourage our citizens to please continue to partner with us as we continually improve our animal shelter. Councilmember Jeffrey Boney for partnering with staff in my office for the walk, drive, and talk tour in the Quail Green subdivision. Residents who participated had an opportunity to express their concerns and to ask questions about sidewalks, adding a sound wall, installing a traffic light, striping, lowering the speed limit, and how to detour traffic. This is an opportunity, is a strategic initiative of my office in partnership with the council members, to really be on the front line to understand the needs and some of the issues facing our community. Councilmember Anthony Maruus for presenting the Lake Olympia Middle School Councilor Tammy Byrd with a random acts of cardness certificate to recognize her many contributions to her students, campus, and the Fort Bend Independent School District. Thank you, council member. Our Parks and Recreation Team, they did a yeoman's job this weekend for coordinating the Second Annual MCTX Fest, which included a number of our other departments, Public Works, Police, Fire, Development Services, our Visitor Center, and Communications Team in partnership with Fort Bend County. There was a good turnout, great entertainment, and we want to thank all those who participated and who showed up. Our Financial Services Team for hosting the Long Range Financial Forecast Symposium on April 5 at our community center, was very informative, and we had a number of citizens that asked a number of questions so that they can be informed about our upcoming budget. And then lastly, all of our teams. I had an opportunity to present our First Annual Pinnacle HPO Awards Luncheon, where we recognize our employees for the high-performing initiatives that they do on a day-to-day basis. This year's awardees for Employee of the Year were Barry Hamilton from our Parks, who's our Parks Superintendent, and Paul, where's Vicky? They actually too good to make a decision on one or the other, so we gave them both the award, and also our Director of the Year, Stacy Walker. So if you would, join me in giving them a round of applause for... That concludes my report, ma'am.
Very good, thank you, sir. Item six on the agendas, the consent agendas, our motion to approve it is printed.
Second.
Councilmember Emery made the motion, Councilman Boney made the second, all those in favor, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules and take item 11B, since we've got some people here from Metro that need to leave, so 11B.
So move.
Their motion and the second. Councilman Emery, motion, Councilman Wyatt, all those in favor, motion carries. Yes, ma'am.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas granting consent and approval to the Metropolitan Transit Authority of Harris County Metro to provide a community connector option within Missouri City, providing for repeal, providing for penalty, and making certain findings relating thereto.
Their motion.
Second.
Councilmember Emery made the motion, Councilman Wyatt made the second. Chris, is she okay?
Well, are they going to give a brief synopsis? What's going on for residents that may be tuned in or people that are here? What's going on?
I think probably, you want to do that, Anthony? Or you want to give a brief, yeah, somebody can just give a brief presentation on it? We had a presentation earlier, council did, so I think it's a little early to be making a whole lot of announcements, but just kind of briefly say what we're looking at doing.
Good evening. My name is Jim Archer, and I'm the Director of Service Planning, Scheduling, and Evaluation for Metro. Over the past few months, we have been meeting with representatives and staff of Missouri City to examine the possibility of offering service in Missouri City. We're pleased to recommend the opportunity to offer a community connector, which is a type of service that's different than fixed route service. It allows us to operate buses in Missouri City, where customers would have basically three options to be able to ride the service. First of which would be to show up at one of the two designated anchor locations and simply board a bus. Second would be to call in and request a pickup at a specific point in time. The third would be a subscription service, where they would call in and request a repeated pickup over a period of time. In concept, what we do is establish a zone, we've worked with staff and with Missouri City, to determine what that zone would be, and then people could ride within that zone anywhere for the base fare of $1.25. The eastern anchor would be located at the Missouri City Fondren Lot, which has connections to three Metro bus routes, the 63 Fondren, the 98 Briar Gate, and the 170 of Missouri City Texas Medical Center. The 170 provides a one-seat ride directly to the Texas Medical Center Transit Center, takes about 30 minutes to get there. And so what we would be looking at is, assuming approval tonight, and then we'll be presenting to the Metro Board on Wednesday, that then we would be working over the next couple of months to develop the promotional information, as well as informational information, to develop the specific wrap for the bus that would be unique for Missouri City. And then we would be doing a rollout with the normal Metro service change, which would be scheduled for Sunday, August the 26. In concept, we would like to do an early rollout, so that way people would have a chance to try the service before we officially announce it. But by tying it in with the Metro service change, then we would be able to get the maximum benefit of notifying the most number of people throughout the region. This service is included in the Metro budget for this year, and so therefore Metro would be picking this up and implementing it, assuming approval.
These are 12 passenger buses?
These are 12 passenger buses, yes.
This is in addition to Metro Lift?
That is correct. Is in addition to Metro Lift, however, the 12 passenger buses also have space for two wheelchairs.
Very good. Any questions?
Yeah, I think you indicated that we'd be able to wrap the buses
Yes, sir.
with Missouri City identity, so people will understand or recognize that it's a Missouri City bus.
That is correct, and we will be working with your staff to ensure that you achieve that.
And as I asked earlier, could you speak to the safety factor as it relates to having these buses in Missouri City?
Certainly. To date, we have another community connector in the Acres Homes area. We have not had any major safety issues there, we would not expect any here. In addition, starting next year, we're going to be procuring additional buses, and those replacement buses will all have cameras, so we'll have additional safety through that. Metro would be expanding its police protection into Missouri City to cover this particular service, so you would have more service in the area from the safety perspective.
Would you say that the Metro buses are as safe as the Fort Bend buses?
I don't know anything about the Fort Bend buses, so I can't, cannot speak to that.
Well, for residents that are concerned about any financial impacts, if any, is Metro requesting or asking Missouri City to make any kind of financial commitment?
The proposal as it currently stands is for a community connector. The community connector operating costs are part of the Metro budget, because Missouri City is a part of the Metro service area. There are some small capital costs, at this point in time, Metro would be incurring those. Should we have future expansion, we may have to discuss that, but the current pilot, Metro would be incurring those costs.
Back to the safety issue, I believe you indicated that they will be equipped with seat belts.
Yes, they will have seat belts.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I just want to thank the Metro staff who've really been very receptive to the feedback that not only staff, but council members have provided, and we look forward to, based on this direction, a collaborative working relationship in getting the initiative started.
Thank you, sir.
Right, there was a motion by Councilmember Emery, a second by Councilman Wyatt, all those here.
I think there's a lady speaking.
What?
There may be somebody else.
I think she's fine.
I think she's raising her hand.
Still here? Oh, I thought you were, Monica Riley. She wasn't sitting over there, you moved on me.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. I just wanted to address the council and staff in regards to the bus, Metro transportation. I had some concerns that there weren't any community input as far as us voting on having Metro Transportation System here in Missouri City, as well as, it looks like that you all are already ready to move forward on this, and I'm not sure that you have gotten the Missouri City community and the residents' approval on this, and so that is a concern for me, and I do not approve of this at this particular time, because I have several concerns and I have lots of questions on how it's structured out, location of where these pickup and drop-off locations will be, as well as, is it stroller-friendly, is it equipped to handle elderly passengers as well as small children? So I have a huge amount of questions for the council before they vote in favor of this particular proposal, and I hope that you all would hold off before we can get more community input and residents to give their feedback.
You may not be aware, but the voters voted to be in Metro as far back as 1978, and the decision to do that means that we pay to be in Metro. Metro has always tried to have buses in Missouri City. Now the opportunity's come. We didn't ask those questions of Fort Bend, who didn't even ask us to put their buses in Missouri City, and their buses run every day. One of the advantages of Metro is that it's more economical than the Fort Bend bus, because you pay one fare to use the Metro bus to go, for example, all the way downtown unless there's a slight difference. But the decision to be in Metro was made a long time ago.
And I understand that, but I'm stating that there is still a host of questions that us as residents have, based on the structure of how this particular operation will go forth.
It operates just like Fort Bend.
It's not going through the neighborhoods.
It's not going through any neighborhoods.
Right, it's not going through the neighborhoods, going down major thoroughfares.
Okay.
And connecting to grocery stores, to HCC, to hospitals, to shopping centers, the routes are not through a neighborhood like some people might think. It's down, yeah, down Texas Parkway, down Cartwright, down Highway 6, so there won't be any buses, unless, unless that resident specifically wants the bus to come to their house, just like Lift does today, Metro Lift does today, they come, and so, and Fort Bend does too. So if you had a specific need, an elderly person that needed to get to the VA hospital or whatever it is, they pick up the phone. They come, and so, and Fort Ben does too. So if you had a specific need, an elderly person that needed to get to the VA hospital or whatever it is, they pick up the phone and they call it. We've been paying a half penny in the Metro since 1978, and we haven't gotten anything out of it except projects, most of the street signs, I mean, the crosswalk signs at schools are paid for by Metro. So this is something that when HCC moved here, they can tell, you know, they brought up the fact that we'd like to have the ability to get students from stopping points. So these, and we're going to be doing a lot of publicity about this and talking about where those stops are going to be, like Walmart and Fiesta and the elderly facility that's over off of Beltway 8. And there's 10 or 12 different sites, but none of them go through the neighborhoods. And I think that's a concern. I can remember early on, people said, "I don't want buses in my neighborhood."
Exactly, because being a suburbia-type area,
Right.
our concern is what type of residents will it bring into our communities? Will it grow the group home facilities and things like that? So that, those are our concerns as wanting to keep this a more family-friendly type environment.
And that's why these buses are smaller that they are, and they're really to get people to shopping centers and things like that. It's not to do like you see in Houston where the buses go through the neighborhoods and stop every six blocks or so, so.
And Ms. Riley, I was a part of the committee, and I'm here to tell you, I vetted and asked all those questions and on a continuous basis, including today where I asked about safety. So that was one of my main concerns, talking about homelessness and talking, you know, the homeless community possibly coming to the area, and also crime. And I was assured, and I was looked, they gave me statistics about what was happening in other communities, because there are other suburban areas that are in Metro, not only he, in other areas too, like in Dallas you have DART. And in looking into all of that stuff, we found that crime is not an issue, and we would not have an issue with that type of transient population coming into Missouri City.
And so with those particular buses, how many buses will there be on the roads? How's it going to affect our air pollution, as well as is it safe for small toddlers? Are they able to have car seat capacity? Things like that? And then also, are the buses only maneuvering in Missouri City only?
Yes, they only are in Missouri City, and they are smaller, and the number of buses depends on the demand.
Okay.
If there's demand there for them, they're talking about having one or two to begin with and maybe four later on if the demand is there for the use of it. But they're no different than Metro service anywhere else except that the buses are smaller. They only, they only have 12 passengers, so they're much, probably about the size of a van, quite frankly.
It's a proven model in another part of the city, and it's also going to be a personalized service, in my opinion, because they're going to wrap it with our logo. We'll probably get to know the bus drivers. It'll be a personal service.
I think the most important thing to note is, it's a pilot. So it's an opportunity, it's nothing definitive. It's a pilot to see whether or not this community is receptive to it, and that if it works, if it's used, then ultimately we'll go from there. But it's a pilot to be able to see whether or not this is something that is good for Missouri City.
And there will be ongoing feedback. So the community will be able to provide through surveys and other feedback their opportunity. I believe it's 95% the Acres Home community has approved of the service in their area. They love it. They feel like it's their bus. And so I believe that over time, as we continue to look at, you know, how this goes, because like the mayor said, we're currently, and I just wanted to correct him, we actually were paying, we're paying a whole cent to Metro, but now we get a half of it back. And so we're getting basically nothing from Metro, from the tax, sales tax dollars that all of you as citizens currently pay to Metro. So this is a long overdue service that our residents need. There are a lot of people who are not fortunate to have transportation that need to get to their jobs in other areas, and they can't afford to as far as having a car or vehicle. And so this is going to be an added value to many of our residents in Missouri City.
Okay, and then my last question and also comment. I know y'all keep referencing Acres Home. We're not in the same dynamics as Acres Homes is, so that's not really a fair comparison to Missouri City to Acres Home because of the socioeconomics in that particular area. There is probably a greater need for transportation. But my question is, as far as who is able to utilize the service, is there going to be some type of making sure that these are Missouri City residents that are using it, or can anyone at one of those stops get on? Or how would that work? Because that's a concern if I'm getting on the bus with someone who actually lives in Houston, but they're trying to get to their cousin's house or something like that.
Anybody can ride the bus that want to ride the bus. Metro is a government-only entity, just like Missouri City, so we can't, they can't limit people as to who can ride, and as long as they can pay, they can ride. But I still want to go back to the fact is that we have that same situation today with Fort Ben, identical with Fort Ben, except it costs you more to ride Fort Ben to Houston than it would with Metro. So what we're bringing is no different than what's on the street today, and guess what? They didn't come and ask us anything, and they didn't have to, because we in Fort Ben County, and they could just show up and do their thing. What, our interest also was being able to get people beyond Missouri City. Like, if you don't have a car in Missouri City, you're stuck, you know?
Why are you referencing outside of Missouri City? They just stated that the road service would only be in Missouri City.
Because we may have some young folk that may can go get a job in Houston if they had transportation to get there.
One of the, one of the stops will be the Fondren Park and Ride.
Yeah.
So they can take the bus to Fondren Park and Ride, get on a bus there and go into Houston.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, and 60% of our residents currently work outside of Missouri City, so there are a lot of people who carpool or currently actually even go to the transit center to go to the medical center in other areas, so.
We have a, we have a service at Highway 6 and Fort Ben Toll Road today. People go there, park in the Kroger parking lot, and go to the medical center back every day. It makes one stop at the Fondren Park and Ride, and then goes directly to the medical center, and comes back to Park and Ride and back to Highway 6. And that's been very, very popular with people, because I can tell you, riding that bus is a lot cheaper than parking in the medical center today, and it stops there at the medical center.
Mayor, that particular location is one of the highest parking rides in all of Metro, based on the utilization of folks using it going downtown. I would add that in addition to our residents, one of the locations in the zone will be in and around our new hotels. We're adding two more new hotels, and residents, not residents, but individuals that come in and staying at the hotel, we would prefer they stay in Missouri City. So whether that's going to the grocery store or going to other strategic locations, they'll be able to utilize that ride to go and benefit, bring sales tax to our city as well.
Okay, but thank you so much.
And Ms. Riley, but Ms. Riley, I do also want you to know that we do take community input. I know I do, and I believe my colleagues do. We take community input seriously, so I don't want you to think that we're just shoving something down the community's throat, because we vetted this, I asked the tough questions, I kicked the tires, and I would never put us in harm's way, at least not with my vote. And I know my colleagues, I believe they feel the same way, and so I believe we're doing the right thing for Missouri City.
Okay, well, thank you for answering my questions and definitely for that clarification. And thank you, Councilman President, for, I've been communicating with him in regards to the transit program.
Absolutely.
So thank y'all so much. And you can disregard my notation on the paper for later on. Okay.
I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing I would like to add, most importantly, if we need to make changes in the future, we're not tying ourselves to this. We can make adjustments
Exactly.
as we see fit to only improve this, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's important for residents to know.
Yeah, we may change the stops, we may add some, we may delete some, you know, we may find out that what we think's important, it's not important.
But we won't get bigger buses.
Yeah, we won't get big buses, no. I don't think we'll have that many riders, so. Very good.
Cool.
Yeah, all those in favor? Motion carries. Since we suspended the rules, and I know there are a number of other people here, let's And 9C is considered authorized in a request by Farmers Market Partners, the host of Farmers Market at 2700 Lake Olympia Parkway.
All times, y'all have been knowing me for years, and this is the first time I can't talk.
Is your voice on the scene?
Can't talk, I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
George, she was smiling.
George, yeah, why is George smiling so much back there? Goodness, George.
Well, Mayor and City Council, I want to thank Anthony and the staff and everybody for allowing us to do this. We withdrew all proper procedures as a special event application. Now we want to take it a bit farther, so Jill, you have to talk, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. We actually had just a request originally to have a couple of the Farmers Markets, and given the fact of the wonderful community response that we've had, we would like for you all now to consider to allow us to have it on a permanent basis, and that would occur on the first and third Saturday of every month between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on Thomasine and George's property, which is located at 2700 Lake Olympia Parkway in Missouri City. We sent a presentation through to you earlier that I hope that you've had the opportunity to have a look at. If not, I'm happy to go through every slide with you now individually. The Farmers Market Partners, basically the overview of the company itself. Thomasine and I started this company, and the objective that we had as to why we wanted to start a Farmers Market was a couple of reasons. The first one was to lift the image and profile of our own subdivision in Lake Olympia. We are of the opinion that if we create something like a Farmers Market environment for our community, the community will actually forge together, build better relationships, and in turn what will occur is that it will lift our image and profile within Missouri City as a city as a whole. Now, the Farmers Market has a couple of elements. The first one is obviously the traditional part of the Farmers Market that you're familiar with, and that is that we support our local farmers here in Texas. All of our farmers come within a 200-mile radius of where we are located, and we then have what's known as our artisan food vendors. The artisan food vendors requirements are that they must source their products from our local farmers that are within the 200-mile radius. So as an example, one of our vendors sells salsa. All of his products to, in order to make that salsa and bottle it, has to come within the 200-mile radius. So we have the Farmers Market side of it, that we know that we're supporting the farmers, the community loves it, it brings the community out together. But we also started another aspect that's related to the Farmers Market, and that is what we called our Young Sprouts Club. The Young Sprouts Club is something that I personally wanted to do for many years now. You can probably tell from my accent, it is not an American accent. I'm originally from Australia, but I am an American. I grew up in Australia, frequenting Farmers Markets basically with my own family, and that is the traditional way that we shop in Australia. And I learned one thing from shopping with my parents when I was quite young, and that is that they educated me on the, if you like, the fruits and the vegetables and the good healthy eating from a very young age, which I have continued in to my adulthood. As far as the Young Sprouts Club is concerned, we've done a couple of elements. We've done a entrepreneurship and the educational side. The way that the entrepreneurship works is that we at the market have provided a lemonade stand to the children free of charge. The children can register online with us, and they come into the market and they're able to sell the lemonade for the entire four hours that the market is open. We don't charge them, and everything that they earn, they get to keep. So there are many life lessons behind the Young Sprouts Club. It's not just the factor of earning a dollar and learning the value of a dollar, but it's also the fact that they have to communicate with other, with adults, with other children. They have to interact, obviously, with the clients at the market. Prior to the children starting the lemonade stand, we then move into our educational side, and what we do is that we take those kids into the market before the market opens, and for 15 minutes, we take them to meet three specific vendors, and they are vendors that are from a farming background. They are introduced to Gundemann Acres, which is a traditional farmer that cultivates from the soil. They're then introduced to a company called Verdi Greens, who actually grow their lettuce by hydroponics means. And the third one is another vendor who sells microgreens. So the children are actually educated on different ways that we cultivate our fresh vegetables, et cetera. They're then given the opportunity to be introduced to a specific type of fruit or vegetable that perhaps they are not familiar with. So as an example, we've had the watermelon radishes in stock at the moment. We've been educating the kids on watermelon radishes and the benefits of eating those.
Let's go to the benefits, let's see one of them.
Sure. The community focal point, obviously, the way that we feel about it and from the community feedback that we've had via nextdoor.com and directly through to our website, is that we feel that obviously it builds a very strong community spirit, and by doing this, we feel that with our neighbors gathering together, it creates a much, it forges a much stronger relationship with our neighbors, and in turn creates a safer neighborhood, obviously, for everyone to live in. We are very proud of the fact that we live in Missouri City, that we are part of, obviously, a bigger picture with our subdivision, and we feel that our community has embraced this immensely, not just within Lake Olympia, but our surrounding neighborhoods as well, our neighbors in Quell Valley, et cetera. We believe that this market will actually showcase Missouri City as being a more desirable place to live. It's something that can be on our events calendar for the first and third Saturday of every month, and it becomes a destination point as to when someone is looking to come into the southwest of Houston, that we become part of that opportunity for them to visit. The educational side of things, as I mentioned earlier, is the Young Sprouts Club. Do you want me to keep going through?
Keep going.
Mm-hmm. The community feedback, what we did do, and we're very, very pleased about this, is that we welcomed with open arms the feedback from the community, not just from the aspect of, yes, they love the market, but anything else that they may wanted to have shared with us. We have had some feedback in reference to the parking. So the way that we plan on rectifying that is that Lake Olympia Parkway is a non-restricted parking street. So we will guide our customers when they come to the market that they're not to park in the side streets blocking our local residents, but in actual fact, they can park along Lake Olympia Parkway. And the second opportunity for them will be to park in the car park of Palmer Elementary School, which is literally diagonal across from where the market takes place. The school is not open on a Saturday, and the car park is wide open there for residents, be the, you know, local Lake Olympia residents in Missouri City, the residents that come through. Do you want me to keep going through with this one here?
No, that's just all the positive.
We've got all the positive feedback here, so I'd like to hand it back, I guess, to each of you now if you'd like to ask any questions in reference to the market.
Mayor, I might just add, pardon me, but I just wanted to put it in perspective that the partners, Farmers Market Partners, did come to Development Services on two occasions for two events in which they did meet the current standards for special events. So it's before you tonight because of the reason authorization is required once they go beyond the frequency that is typically allowed in our Section 9.10 of the zoning ordinance regarding special events. So with that being said, what we did was we have an application process in which we tried to deal with the topics that were discussed earlier, in which there are some neighborhood concerns regarding traffic, impact, and what have you. And we also initially met with the partners regarding the facility to make sure that it met the minimum standards, and also to look at what their long-range goals were. And also, we did facilitate a meeting with the HOA manager, because some questions were fielded through our communications department, so we wanted to make sure those questions were being addressed before this particular meeting. That being said, as a result, this particular parking plan was initiated to address those concerns, and although there's like no areas of no parking on some of the streets, they decided to place directional signage in various locations, pointing folks where to park regarding the facility. That being said, we'll address any initial concerns. I know that the HOA has presence in the meeting today, and there may be some folks that have signed up to speak as well, and staff is here to answer any related questions. Also involved has been code enforcement in our health district, because there are some food trucks that are a part of this use that would have to also meet our health permit standards as well. Signage is another thing in which is a part of this application, in which they're requesting vicinity notice advertisement of the use so that folks could have safe access. So we'll be glad to answer any questions regarding.
So they're, they're here because they have exceeded the line.
They will with any more activities within the six-month period. They're hoping to do this on a first and third Saturday interval per month for the um... They're hoping to do this on a first and third Saturday interval per month for the growing crop season.
So, but that interval is two times a?
Two times per month.
No, no, no. What our ordinance.
Our requirement is with, you can do it within a two-week period, but you cannot do it more than six months. So every six months, they can come in and do an activity within a two-week.
So they can only do two activities a year?
Pretty much would turn out to that, that they might end up with four activities, depending on how they standard.
In accordance with the ordinance.
In accordance with the ordinance.
That's why I want to make sure what's the ordinance says.
First of all, Jill and Thomasine, great idea. I thank y'all for putting all the effort into this. Otis, what about security? Like, if it's a busy Saturday or a busy weekend and you have a lot of traffic, and are we going to have onsite security for any reasons? Do you anticipate needing security?
When you say security, is it for the purpose of?
Maybe traffic or just overall, just, you know, eyes on, eyes on deck?
One of the things that, well, one of the things about farmers market people, one thing that we learned, they come in, they buy their stuff, and they leave. It's not like it's a festival or anything where people stay all day long. And we've arranged where the vendors are in the same location every time. So when someone wants to go to get a specific thing, they know exactly where to go. We even have where we have a veggie valet where we're actually getting kids to bring the packages to a certain area, and then they can just drive and pick it up. And we're working on one other thing that is going to be a surprise later on. She's hunching me, I can't say anything now.
No, 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 yeah.
But that's, and then we did find out, excuse me, that the volunteer department, Cory, your department, we found out with the volunteers, you can ask volunteers to help you with your events that's going on in Missouri City. So we've been trying to get some volunteers to do that, to help.
There's a new grocery store coming to Santa called Harvest Market, and they do a lot of, yes, that's a perfect timing, good.
The other thing that we've done as well, in order to expedite the clients to come in and out of the market very quickly, is that we invested in software for an interactive map, which is on our website. So what that basically means is that before you even leave the house, if you click on the interactive map, you can see every single vendor, where are they located, and what are they selling? And we specifically invested in that software in order to expedite all of the consumers in and out very quickly, so then they don't linger at the market.
So we could discuss this legally, I move that we adopt for discussion of, for purpose of discussion.
And I just had a question about.
Okay, now we can discuss.
Do we need to vote on that?
I mean, you don't want to get it right.
About parking, you mentioned Parker Elementary. How you doing, Thomasine? Good to see you. Palmer, excuse me, Elementary. Have you all talked to Fort Bend ISD, or have you gotten approval from Parker?
We talked.
Palmer, excuse me, to Parker.
We talked with Ms. Parr at Palmer, because we have a relationship with them. In fact, they called us to ask if our building can be designated as one of the evacuation places in case there's anything that goes on with the school. So it's kind of like a mutual agreement. And when they have things that go on with the school now, they park in our parking lot all the time. And we've also met with Fort Bend ISD, because they're really interested in our Young Sprouts Club. In fact, we have a meeting coming up. We've already met with the nutrition department, and we have a meeting with the superintendent because he thinks the farmers market is a gold, he said it was a gold, a drop of gold. Yes. So we've been working with Fort Bend. And we also met with Wyatt Elementary School, not elementary school, the private school.
The Wyatt School.
The Wyatt School. And they're working with us, because eventually what we would like to do is take the kids out to the farms on field trips. And we're trying to encourage the kids to learn how to make healthy food choices at a young age. You have to catch them when they're young. And teaching entrepreneurship, one of the little ladies that did the lemonade stand, she made $150. She had a business plan. Everything was all just in order. So we're trying to just help from the top on up.
But relative to parking, Fort Bend ISD and Palmer, are they okay with you all parking there?
Yes, Ms. Parr is. You can get something and write in if you like it.
I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure that you all don't have any problems. I don't know what the rules are when schools are closed and your usage of their parking lot or their, you know, onsite, but I just wanted to make sure you guys didn't get rolling and then, you know, have to put the brakes on things.
No, thank you for asking that.
How do we control the parking along Crowe Valley? There are houses along there and.
They've agreed to direct the traffic only to the main corridor, although we do not have no parking, yeah, we do not have any no parking signs.
And you're not going to be able to stop people from parking along Crowe Valley. Just because they tell them not to, doesn't mean that, Thomasine, you know they're going to park there.
Well, that was one of the things about the directional signage, that we would like approval to be able to put some signage up around the property to basically indicate where people can park.
I mean, I'm concerned about that myself. I love the idea, but I also know that there are houses located along Crowe Valley that are going to, not want these people parking in front of their house all day long, or even in a period of time blocking their driveway.
Oh, we don't want that either.
I wish there was a way to control.
And if you could help us, we would sure appreciate it. If you could help us, we would sure appreciate it.
But we can't put no parking signs along Crowe Valley.
People can park in front of their house.
People are going to park there as it is. And that's, the other question I have is, does the food truck meet our food truck ordinance?
So far, they've been inspected for each event properly. Our file department will be getting involved in the process.
He's asking whether or not it complies to the current food.
Current ordinance, yes, sir. Yes, sir. They went through a permit process.
We did.
But as, but for as the use is concerned, our ordinance is very specific as when food trucks can be used. And that's the question the mayor is asking.
And does that fit it?
Through the special event process, we've allowed food trucks to answer your questions.
For certain organizations.
It's only. For 24 of them.
And we only have two food trucks at a time.
I understand that. I just.
In other words, if any other nonprofit were to have a similar special event process, then we would allow the tents and the food trucks under that provision.
24 times a year.
And that was going to be my course.
Not regarding frequency, but yes, through the process, yes.
And I think it's a great idea, and I heard y'all had a good time with the first one, but I have some more specific questions that relate to how we apply this to anybody else that come ask us. And first off, is Farmers Partner profit or not-for-profit?
It's for profit.
To profit.
Much profit, but it's for profit.
Well, but, but, but there are different ways we have worked with, in accordance with profit versus not-for-profit. The other question that I have is, is, well, let me, let me look at it, because I wrote them all down while y'all were talking. Now, you're saying that you want to do this on a permanent basis?
Not for 12 months, just in the seasonal months. We start in March, and hopefully maybe around October or November, depends on, you know, what's being produced at that time.
And so what is the zoning use for that location?
2,700.
Well, commercial.
And the reason I'm asking, if you really start doing business there, then it becomes a business use, you know, which you need to go through and apply for a business use. It needs to comply with zoning, because we could have anybody come in and want to do the same thing, even though I know you and I know you mean well, but we still have to make sure we're doing it in accordance with, with, with the rules.
So it's LC2, yes.
It's an LC2. So that's, that's okay. That's good. That's good. That's good. But I wanted to know. That's, that's good.
LC2.
LC2, so that would be a permitted use, okay? But if they're going to do this for a whole year, shouldn't they get, have to get a business application? Because, because it's not a charity, it's a for-profit, just like Kroger's, Circle C, anybody else. Okay? So, so that's another consideration. And if it is, then maybe you don't even need to be doing a special deal, okay? If it's a normal business use, okay? Now, I do object to parking on Lake Olympia Boulevard. Lake Olympia is a major thoroughfare, and that thoroughfare is designed to get traffic through. And if we let you park there, then how do we not let the people that want to have a big party back on Swan Island to park, park there? Move all your, if you can, move all your parking to the elementary school, you'll be better off anyway. You won't have the issue with the houses, what have you. But we can not start using major thoroughfares for parking, you know?
I just wanted to make the.
And you may not even been aware of that, so.
Yeah. I just wanted to let the council know, though, that people do park on Lake Olympia Parkway, because as soon as the pool season starts, we have the swim meet, and they literally park up and down all of Lake Olympia Parkway for the entire summer.
They may not be doing it anymore. Because it is a major thoroughfare, and, and it's a higher speed, you know? And maybe we shouldn't have people parking, going to swim, things with little kids getting in and out on a, you know? Plus, we still get complaints about people speeding on, in the 40 mile an hour zone. But I think if you make it a part of your business application, you don't have to come to us.
Okay.
It's just a regular operating deal.
Okay, and Jerry, one thing, the people that come to the farmers market, 90% of them already live in Lake Olympia.
Well, that's okay, but they, they shouldn't be able to block the major thoroughfare. I drive Lake Olympia, I don't live in Lake, the thoroughfare is for everybody, even the people that don't live there, for the people who want to go from Highway 6 to the toll road. It's not just, it's not, it's not a residential street.
Well, that's why we're here, to find out everything that we need to do.
Yeah. Mayor, it's my understanding that there have been conversations with the HOA, so they may want to share with you some of those conversations. And I think they alluded to, yeah, the HOA is here as well. And then the other issue is, it's my understanding it was a six-to-eight-month application versus a 12-month, and I don't know whether or not that makes a difference or not, but from our standpoint, we wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of what the request is and before you make your final action.
Well, but I just think if they go through the regular business process, they shouldn't even have to come here for a request. They have the right zoning already for what they want to do. That makes it even simpler than, than, than having to come up here and go through all this with us asking 900,000 questions and all of that stuff.
Well, I do have two individuals that want to speak too, so that signed up to speak about it.
Well, assuming that we go through the, the, the business approach, it kind of negates the question I was going to ask, is if we change the ordinance, would it just be changed for the farmers market, or do we have to be considering, you know, that ordinance now available to anyone else who might want to take advantage of it? Or could it be specific just to this organization?
If we were to apply the LC3, LC2 standards, there are other complications that we'll have to work through, such as the food trucks on a permanent basis, due to the fact that we just adopted a food truck ordinance that limited them in certain locations. Had this been an HOA facility, we specifically said that they could be permitted on HOA facilities, but this is not. So, so that's where the complication sets in, is.
Well, the, the conflict with, with that statement is, is that if they were a not-for-profit, we wouldn't have a problem with the food truck.
Yes.
But if they do it as, and they still can't do it on the regular business occupation, but they could do their farmers market on and don't even have to come to us.
They wouldn't be able to have the food trucks on the regular.
If I may, there, there may also be some complications with the outdoor sales and services ordinance. We do have a provision that prohibits certain businesses from having outdoor sales, depending on the size of the business.
That is true, too.
So we would need to look at all of those ordinances and analyze the proposal in the context of all of them.
But let's get them through this one and, and then address those things.
I think the point is there's a number of different statutes and ordinances that we have to look at to, you know, allow, you know, this to go forward. So it's not like we're throwing up roadblocks. It's a matter of, you know, we've got certain requirements and restrictions. We've got to make sure that, you know, that we follow those so that.
If we don't, somebody's going to show it later on.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? The, the market is nominated on the first and third Saturday. This is the third Saturday coming up.
And your question is?
Can we do it this Saturday coming up?
That would require council action.
Well, my deal is to get them through this one, but we have to go back and address all these other issues. My intention is not to pull.
I don't have a problem in doing it this Saturday, but I think we've got to resolve the other problems going forward, Thomasine.
Okay.
I think you all want it done right, too.
And with some of the input that you're receiving from us, that maybe that'll help you kind of guide the way that you, you know, have the activity set up or, you know, try to restrict or limit parking. So, you know, you could, you could try to implement some of these thoughts just, you know, for this third, third week that you're, you're asking for us to continue.
And quite frankly, you may want to look at having a few police officers help you with traffic.
Yeah, we thought about that.
And they could direct that traffic to Palmer rather than along Crowe Valley and Lake Olympia. People pay attention to a police officer better than they do me or you standing up there telling them they can't park along there. If that police officer says parking is at Palmer and directs them there, then you eliminate the problem that I think I'm fixing to hear about right here from these other people.
Yeah. We just, you know, in reference to the parking, we basically, when we met with Matt, who represents the HOA and the management company, we followed what he had, you know, discussed in the meeting with us to park along Lake Olympia and Palmer Elementary.
You've got to understand, that's a management group. They don't know the law. That's a management group that's from out of town, not here. I know. I know. Okay? They're a management group. They're there to operate the HOA. There are rules and regulations that they have no earthly idea about, I can tell you. And those are the ones we're trying to point out to you so you can get over those hurdles.
Yeah. Well, what we want to do is make sure that we do things and we do it decently and in order, and that's why we.
Exactly. Otherwise, Thomasine, you know that if you don't, somebody's going to come up later and bring up the issue of us giving you approval to do something that we weren't legally given to approval to, so. Thank you all. We'll hear from two other people here that have signed up. Huh?
The HOA management.
I don't know, I've got two other people on here, I'm going to call them up.
I don't know if he's one of those.
Karen Overton. And just state your name and address, so people know who you are.
Okay. My name is Karen Overton. I'm at 831 Desert Rose Place. I have a company, Overton Resources. I do marketing services. I'm also a college professor at Houston Community College, teaching business management, management and marketing. I'm also an elected board member of 49, but I'm here tonight as a resident. I've attended one of their farmers market activities, and I'll tell you as a marketer that it was so well-organized and so well-promoted that I was extremely impressed. First of all, I enjoyed having someone welcoming me into the farmers market. Someone was there taking a head count of people coming in, which I thought was a very good idea, to get a scope of the size of that particular opening. Of course, it was the grand opening, and that's like the introductory stage, so you're going to have a lot. But I felt like it was very impressive that they even knew to do that. Also, there were dogs, there were trying, well, dog owners with their dogs, they were trying to enter the area. They were very, very cautious and very kind but firm, saying that dogs could not enter that area. And I felt like that was pretty good, very good on their part to be in compliance with the city as far as not having animals in that area. I would also say that there were other neighbors that were there that I didn't even know. I've been in the area about two years, and I was able to meet people from Quell Valley that I didn't know. We were talking and what have you, and it was a great community feeling that I have not felt before in this particular area. I also would say that as far as the parking is concerned, I appreciate the council looking at that. That is a challenge. But I offered the council to be as optimistic about this community event as you were about Metro. This is a very good idea. This is a very good community effort to really bring us together as a community. And I would appreciate your kindness and your consideration and your flexibility in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have John Bertram.
Thank you, esteemed mayor, members of the council. I live in Lake Olympia. Farmer's Market is a great idea for Missouri City. Farmer's Market in our neighborhood at twenty-seven hundred Lake Olympia Parkway is not. I live across this, across from the intersection. When the Lake Olympia community was approached about the sale of the former clubhouse at twenty-seven hundred Lake Olympia Parkway, the sale was put forth as a commercial property that would be used for the housing of small, independent, shared offices with minimal impact to the image of the community or the traffic in the area. We have been unable to obtain the original traffic impact study when the sale was originally approved by the HOA, or any subsequent traffic impact study concerning the permitting of the farmer's market. As I understand it, according to Section twelve-one A of the Missouri City Municipal Code, all developments in all zoning districts should provide a sufficient number of parking and loading spaces to accommodate the vehicles of residents, customers, or employees. Was there ever a traffic impact study done under the code or any other code for that fact, for this location as a place of business, or for that fact as a farmer's market? This is not a bi-weekly event, this is not a special event. This is an event that is not happening once or twice a year, it's happening twice a month, okay? Currently, there's inadequate parking for loading, unloading, vendors, personal vehicles, and thousands of shoppers that are being advertised to. This farmer's market is currently being advertised to over forty-four neighborhoods, not Lake Olympia, on nextdoor.com, which reaches over eleven thousand neighbors living outside of our neighborhood, and is also advertised on Facebook, Instagram, and farmersmarketpartners.com. Even if a small percentage of individuals respond to these ads, you are still talking about a massive amount of traffic through our neighborhood, as well as an excessive amount of parking needed to accommodate the patrons of this market. Recently, we have personally witnessed individuals casing cars, and managed to capture one on film who was going around checking doors to see if one was open, okay? This creates a concern for the safety of property and the potential for increased crime due to this business. Additionally, this farmer's market is located at a busy intersection that is known for being dangerous, as Missouri City Police have known to camp out and catch people not stopping for the stop sign. During the farmer's market, adults and small children must cross the intersection in order to get to the farmer's market. In six short weeks, summer will be here, and many of our resident families will be coming to this intersection to utilize the pool facility and park located on Crow Valley Drive and Kenwick. Add to the residents who are jogging, biking, or walking their dogs at this intersection, and you can imagine the potential for severe accidents to occur. We would rather action be taken now to avoid this rather than have to deal with it after someone's loss. The traffic has increased exponentially with the farmer's market just starting, and if the popularity of the farmer's market grows, as it is expected to-
Mr. Bertam.
This problem-
Your time, you reached a three-minute time, time limit.
I'm sorry, they had so much more time to explain their side, I asked the council's indulgence.
You received the mayor's approval to move forward.
What's that?
Go ahead, sir.
The mayor's approval to move forward.
Thank you, okay. We'd prefer to approach this. The farmer's market was starting, if the popularity continues to grow, this problem will become intolerable and dangerous, not only to the well-being of the neighborhood residents and children, but also negatively impacting the value of the homes in Lake Olympia. In conclusion, drawing this much population and traffic to this intersection and into our subdivision has already proven to attract crime and will devalue the homes throughout the neighborhood, as it does not keep with the neighborhood's original charter. Lake Olympia is known for its natural beauty, lakes, and tranquility. If I were a homebuyer and was entering the neighborhood through the beautiful entrance at Highway six of Lake Olympia Parkway, I would not notice the lake or the landscaping nor the tranquility. I would notice the traffic congestion, turn around, and leave. A farmer's market that puts all this traffic congestion and parking on the streets of our neighborhood and attracts crime is not a benefit to our neighborhood. Wouldn't it make more sense for this farmer's market to relocate perhaps to a church parking lot on Highway six? Better access, plenty of spaces for vendors and parking for everyone without congestion, or the danger of individuals crossing a busy intersection? It makes no sense to operate this huge, growing farmer's market in a place that is already too small and imposing on residents' safety and tranquility of the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, this is an FYI in case the question comes. The applicants, which were Ms. Argento and Ms. Johnson were applicants, and they're allowed and extended a period of time for their presentation, these individuals signed up for the three-minute limit regarding that.
Sir, we only found out about this literally this morning, and I met with them, and it is well, nothing against these young ladies, seriously, and I don't have anything against their projection, their business, what they want to do, but in our neighborhood, if you saw the traffic that is occurring there, I have video, if anyone on the council wants it, I'll be more than happy to forward it to you. I'm in media, and I can tell you, it is being marketed extremely well, and with just the success, and the majority of members coming to it are not from Lake Olympia, just from outside, it's being marketed everywhere, okay? You're not talking about a small, nice, communal farmer's market, you're talking about something that's over here in sugar land, right next to the sugar mill. That's where it's going towards, that does not need to be in residential area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think the question early on was, is there a way to allow them to do the one this weekend until we get all these other things resolved?
Well, Mayor, again, I think as Otis stated, you have the authority as the governing body to provide a waiver, a temporary waiver to allow it to occur. And then, at that point, a decision would need to be made if that's the will of the council.
Let them get with Otis and work out all these little nuances and-
Since I made the motion, my motion would be to allow them to do it this weekend, provided there are no parking on Crow Valley and Lake Olympia Parkway.
Second.
Okay.
And who's going to monitor that?
Well, I need security.
We got a police department that monitors that.
Should we include as part of that a presence by one of our traffic officers during that time that the market is open?
To see what kind of a problem we might or might not have.
And ask our chief if he can give us feedback after. I know we're throwing this on him real quick.
Yeah, and I guess from my standpoint, the chief can come up, please. At this point, you know, we're Monday now, and not knowing, capacity-wise, what's available, et cetera, I would hope that he can share with you what's going on.
Yeah, it's extremely short notice, and the degree of liability that we may incur by not knowing what we're looking at here and how many personnel I need to assign for this, might be a bit of a challenge for us if we're talking about this Saturday. So, and parking on Lake Olympia would be a nightmare if it's as advertised as well as they say that it's advertised. So, I think the farmer's market's a great idea, but-
But if there's an issue and somebody called, you all will show up.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I guess the question is, I mean, that's up to them to find the off-duty security, the off-duty officers to work, if you've got them available, you know, that's the question. So that, the original motion was by Watt and seconded by Morales. So you amend that?
I changed my motion.
He amended his resolution?
He just changed the so-
Huh?
I changed my motion, so if the second accept my change, then we're okay.
You're adding.
That's fine.
What I'm afraid of now is that we're going to get a crowd, they're going to go shopping, the police are going to show up, and then it gives a negative connotation around what's a great idea.
Oh, they're there for traffic.
I know, but-
Like any event.
It's still going to be a negative impact on our PD, a negative impact on their farmer's market.
We had fifteen of them at our music fest.
Yeah.
Okay.
Had them seventy-five times, right.
So, yeah. So, what is the motion?
I think Jerry said the motion is to let them have it, but no parking on-
Crow Valley and Lake Olympia Parkway.
And how are you going to regulate that?
With their security.
That's the part you added.
Right.
Okay.
Before we vote, should we give the HOA management group an opportunity?
If you want to. Did they sign up?
It seems like everybody wants to.
Did they sign up?
They didn't sign up. No, they did not sign up.
Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't have an intent to speak. I was here more as an observer, but-
Didn't sign up.
Yep.
So, we're going to hold rules.
Okay.
Reminder of that.
Thank you, though. Would you like me to speak? No?
No, sir.
All right.
I don't think you intended to, anyway.
Well, I can if you like.
No, I don't think so. All right, there was a motion and a second, do we understand the motion?
A quick point of clarification, do you want them to hire a certain amount of officers to control traffic?
I don't think that's it.
Okay.
That's to be determined.
Okay.
Mayor, one thing that might be important to note is the fact that if you want no parking in those areas, we need the authority to restrict parking, and if there is no parking signs, you know, if there's nothing to restrict parking in the public roadways-
The point I raised early on.
Even if you hire security, that officer has no authority to prevent that.
Exactly.
If I may, Section nine point ten in the zoning ordinance actually provides that the use of right-of-ways are prohibited unless expressly approved by city council for special events, therefore, if that becomes an issue, there is a section under which those folks can be, or at least the sponsors could be cited.
Yeah, it's something you all have to put into play now.
But if this gets canceled, would there be vendors out of money? Did you all already collect money for this weekend's event?
Yes.
Huh?
I think we go forward without even restricting.
Well, there was a motion, we'd have to deal with the security issue the best we can, okay?
Knowing these people, they're going to do the best they can to make-
Sure they are.
I have no doubt in my mind that's going to happen.
All right, there was a motion and a second. And then they can come back to us, we want you all to resolve all those other little issues.
Well, not only that, and I think Development Services need to do a better job in explaining what the options are when people come in for situations like this. One is that the food truck deal doesn't apply, okay? The other is that what is the current zoning, and how can we make it work within the current zoning? We could have saved a whole lot of headache if we had done that. Now, under the zoning, it may require, as Ejoy said, no outside sales, but there's a way to get to that even with the current zoning, I know that, but unless we tell people, they won't know that.
Right.
I know, because I've been around forever and was here when the zoning ordinance was passed, and these things can't be worked out, because we really didn't help them, we just sent the folk through a gyration.
And as I stated also, there are other difficulties such as onsite parking, which will be required, and also architectural standards for the tents and whatever accessory structures-
If there's a specific use for that, and they could bring onsite parking, show they got it with the school, we can work that out, but that's what you got to go through to help.
Do you have signage Saturday that directs people to Palmer?
Yes, sir.
You know, event parking?
That was part of the, that was part of the request, because you have to have permits for the signage.
Councilmember, you brings up some very valid points on the Development Services. What happened in this case was a timing issue of what their request-
Has no excuse, Scott, it could have been a lot cleaner this, the information could have been a lot better, and I'm not going to accept that. And usually I don't get rattled in these meetings, but I'm just not going to accept that. We could have done a better job by informing these applicants what their potential and what have you, okay?
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor? On the poll, motion carried. All right.
It passed.
It's to allow this weekend with some directional signage in place and some security in place, you know, or at least directional people in place, and then we'll work out all the other details.
But the permit approval was not, I just want to make sure, the permit approval-
That only.
I got you, so basically directional signage.
We can't do it, we get all this other stuff worked out, so we don't have to go through this again, whatever those recommendations are from Otis and his staff, so. All right, guys, let's get after it this weekend. All right, we'll go back to the regular agenda, and we'll go to, where are we, seven? Public hearings and related actions, seven A one.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Section twenty-two violations and penalties of Appendix A of the Missouri City Code entitled "The City of Missouri City's Zoning Ordinance," amending rules regarding minimum penalties for certain zoning violations, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
And this is the first of two readings, yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion, Councilman Boney made the second, all those in favor? All right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is a request by Development Services on behalf of the zoning text amendment regarding Section twenty-two, as noted, for violations that are typically repeated, violations dealing with residential areas as it relates to accessory structures, fencing, outdoor storage on commercial in our business park and other zoning districts such as industrial. What has occurred is over the period of the last six months or so, this item came before the code enforcement task force, as well as legal and other departments, and we basically ironed out this opportunity to deal with repeat offenders in those areas. What this ordinance does is it deals with an opportunity to deal with trash, for example, first offenders with our trash ordinances are actually fined up to fifty dollars for the first occurrence. With this proposed amendment, it would allow us to fine one hundred dollars for the first offender, two fifty for the second, five hundred for the third offense, and then that's within a twelve-month period. So we're asking for council approval of the first, of two readings, and also entertain the public hearing on this zoning text amendment.
It is a public hearing, so anyone can address council on the item. I didn't see anyone sign up. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion closed.
Seven A, there's a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions?
What were the levels?
I'm sorry, for the first offense, that's one hundred dollars, second offense, two fifty, five hundred for the third, and subsequent offenses within a twelve-month period. So it's graduated fines.
This is what council had already adopted in terms of the fines, isn't it?
In certain areas, but specifically with those zoning items to assist code enforcement and also our legal department.
But what this does more important is somebody's found guilty, then this is the fine that they assess.
Yes, sir.
Not one dollar?
Right. It used to be one dollar and up to five hundred, but this makes it more specific.
Yeah, we want to make sure that it's not one dollar. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Seven B one.
Was there a motion to approve the-
Yeah, there was, we voted, Boney and Emery.
Oh, was there a motion to close and to approve the, okay.
Seven B one. Public hearing to receive comments for and against proposed city's community development block grant program year twenty-eighteen annual action plan. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, ma'am and council. Tonight, we're here to have a public meeting in regards to, in regards to the city's, City Reggie Program Year eighteen action plan. As you know, as you know, we are required to allow the public to have their voices heard in regards to the funding recommendation set by the city. The purpose of the program, the city will be receiving funding through the U.S. Urban Housing and Urban Development Program to meet a national objectives. Those three national objectives include low-to-moderate-income individuals, prevent slum and blight, and to meet urgent need that the city may have. prevent slum and blight, and to meet urgent need that the city may have. Eligible projects or eligible applicants, as you are aware, are nonprofit organizations, city departments, and HOAs. Eligible projects are such projects such as public improvement, code enforcement, economic development, and public service projects, as well as infrastructure. Ineligible projects are projects such as those that will convene, conduct general government business, or political activities, or new housing construction. As you can see, this is a map of the CDVG target areas in which the city has seven designated areas that are determined by the US Census tract to have low and moderate income. Because the city has not received its actual intended program allocation for 2018, our community development advisory council have made an estimate funding recommendation of $300,000. That recommendation was based on the documentation that came down from HUD that included that the CDVG program will receive an increase of funding this year. And as such, they have made a estimated program allocation. Because the city has not received this actual funding from HUD, we are required to do contingency language. This language basically states, and is placed in our action plan, that if the city receives an increase or decrease to its annual funding, it would take those funds from our housing rehabilitation allocation, as well as the percentages from the public service and admin, which are capped at 15% and 20% respectively. These are some projects that the city is suggesting to find. Therefore, I propose, the CDAC made these proposed funding recommendations, which are as follows. For public service activities, Fort Ben seniors, Meals on Wheels, a funding amount $11,250. Child advocates of Fort Ben, $11,250. Edison Arts, $11,500. The city's scholarship and educational program, $11,000. These programs are capped at 15%, so it will be increased or decreased based on the actual funding amount. Non-public service activities consist of the city's code enforcement program at $47,000, the housing rehabilitation program at $111,000, and Hunters Glen 1 and 2 Homeowners Association for Playground Improvement Project, $37,000, and program administration, $60,000, which is capped at 20%. That concludes my presentation of the proposed recommendation for the CDVG program year 18, and you can entertain any public questions.
Yeah, I got a question. Fon Meadow in this group?
You need to open the public hearing.
Yeah, we need to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, move that we open the public hearing.
There a second?
A second.
All right, now, my question is, Fon Meadow in this?
I haven't... We haven't received the application from Fon Meadow.
No, is Fon Meadow subdivision in this... Is in this blue area?
In the CDVG area. Yes, it is.
It is.
Then would the bridge that Bruce has continually come to us and asked for to connect those two subdivisions eligible for this grant?
If it's feasible within the funding, overall funding allocation, it could be considered eligible.
It fits the requirement, does it not?
Yes.
Yeah, I want it considered.
And then, well, they would have to submit an application.
Who does?
The...
The HOA does?
Correct.
I bet we can get them to do it.
Let's go on with the public hearing.
And it depends on the cost of the project as well.
Okay.
Mayor, the cost estimate for that bridge that we worked up in conjunction with Harris County Flood Control is $378,000. At this point, that will exceed the city's total allocation for CDVG.
Mayor, one of the things that's important to note is we have a very small allocation for CDVG dollars. When we're talking about $300,000, and you look at the past focus and emphasis for our CDVG dollars has been more on a programmatic services standpoint. One of the things that we're talking about from staff is utilizing some of the dollars that we have, the leverage through some of the programs with CDVG, to focusing on more infrastructure-related projects and parks in the CDVG area. At this point, though, there are requirements, specific requirements, timelines, that have to be adhered to if we're gonna get these dollars. And unfortunately, this is part of that process. I don't know whether or not we have the adequate time to now go back out and solicit additional requests, because we posted it accordingly as relates to when those responses had to come through. So, if this body would like, if, based on what's been recommended, it's not amenable to any of these recommendations, a recommendation could go back to reallocate those dollars in other areas in this program. But based on going back out to solicit other things, I wouldn't advise that.
Scott, how much did the bridge cost that connects the two sections of Meadow Creek? I guarantee you, I know $300,000.
Well, I think the question right now is the public hearing. That's all the obligation we have at this point.
But I got a question, too. I mean, how much did that bridge cost?
It was much less than... I don't know the number off the top of my head, but if I had to guess, it was much less than $100,000. The difference with the Harris County Flood Control is that channel is undersized currently, and Harris County Flood Control has told us they would require a zero-head-loss structure. And with this top bank span of that channel, that would mean no peers within the channel itself, which would be a significant reduction in costs. And that's where the cost estimate is driven up, so.
Then the structure itself, and that support structure.
And the crossing of the Gulf Coast Water Authority Canal did not have that same restriction when that was built, because it's a water supply canal, not a drainage facility.
And Mayor, let me... I voted to move this forward on the committee because... But I had significant questions and concerns about this. And one of the things, this is an unprecedented act. We've never funded any projects like this where private facilities were funded with federal dollars and any city dollars. And so, we moved it forward for staff to look into whether we would be, as a city, liable for any issues that would come as a result of us funding this park. And I think it was brought to us via email that HUD got back to Latoya and told her that these funds could go to this particular facility. However, they would have to open this up for public use, which means that they cannot deny access to anyone. And it was stated that the HOA would be in agreement with allowing an agreement to be made between the city and the HOA to receive those funds. I still believe that the city would be in a tremendous amount of risk by entering to an agreement like this. And I don't know if Ejoy could speak more to that.
Can I just suggest that, let's go back to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Because we're not at the decision point. And we should hear from any of the people that are here who want to... And I understand what you're saying, but this is not... It's just a public... I would like to ask the applicants if they're here. I'd like to ask them some questions, if we can do that.
And we do have applicants present, if they can stand and if they have any questions.
Each one of them come and tell us what they're gonna do. Mayor?
Huh?
Have each one come and tell us what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I need each one of the applicants that are here to just come up and tell us what you're gonna do with the money. Let's see, why don't we take, in the order, I guess we've got the senior Meals on Wheels. Anybody here from Senior Meals on Wheels? Where's our senior Meals on Wheels applicant?
No, not at this time.
They're not here.
How about child advocates?
Not at this time.
And Edison Art? There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Charity Carter with Edison Arts Foundation. Thank you. We have several of our board members here, as well as some of our students. And we did have a board member that had to leave, just for sake of time. So, we're thankful that we were, I guess, approved, maybe? Considered, considered for approval for our STAR program. Our STAR is our summer theater arts repertory. And we have two summer sessions. And so, we were requesting approval for the second summer session of STAR. STAR, what we plan to present for our students is a culmination of a play. This play that we're putting on is from a local resident. And she wrote a book called Meeting on the Moon about bullying. And this is our opportunity to put that book into action. And so, that's what we were requesting for, I think, 20 students, 20 to 40 students, to be able to participate in this STAR summer theater arts repertory program.
Very good. Thank you. All of you with Edison Art?
We all have voted. I'm one of the board members. I am a resident of Fort Ben County. And we need to do something for our youth. And I think the arts will definitely promote positiveness for our children.
Thank you, very good.
And this will be a performance that will bring in the community to see it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for working out for our kids. Thank you.
Our scholarships, and we wanna talk about those.
There are no comments here from our scholarships, so those are sent out to our residents of Missouri City, who have been on a continual ration basis, receiving those allocations.
Well, let's see, I know about code enforcement, housing rehab, Hunters Glen 1 and 2 Homeowners Association.
That would be us, sir. Good evening. We represent Hunters Glen 1 and 2. We put in the application for the playground. We have a huge area that we like. We have one, but it's in dire need of renovations. And we all got together and wanted to get this grant so we could go ahead and open this to the public. And we have quite a bit of families that would love to use this area. Or, I mean, like I said, we have a huge, huge area for them to use as a park. We have a playground for the kids, baseball area, tennis courts, I mean...
Is the HOA supporting it?
Yes, we are the HOA.
I mean, are y'all putting money into this yourselves? What have y'all spent?
Um, I don't know right off the top of my head. But we do, we keep the grounds and everything up.
I used to live in Hunters Glen, section 1. Right at the corner of Oakberry and Whispin Pines.
Okay.
Played on the tennis court, swimming in the swimming pool. Former councilman Scott Moulton, I organized the first baseball team. That was in... And that's how the backstop got put up. That is the original backstop.
Okay.
I have a number of concerns.
Okay.
And I have to first tell you, first off, we have never... And we've had numerous requests for similar to what you've asked for. And we've never, we have never done that. I guess my first question is, what is your HOA assessment?
$108.
And what is your collector rate?
Annually. Pardon me?
What is your collection rate? How much do you collect?
But right now, we're at, what, about 81%?
Yes.
So, it has gone up. In the past, it was about 40, 45%.
And how is it you have?
$760.
$760. And you have, and your HOA assessment is $108,000? I mean, $108.
$108 annually.
A year.
Right.
That's three-quarters of a million dollars.
Right.
And what's your... What's your end and balance in your budget?
Right now, we're at $79,000.
$79,000? Okay. And so, how you plan to use that, $79,000?
We're getting the grounds and everything together. There's trees that's overgrown, the fences and everything on the playground. So, we're getting that cleared off. And we've had some shrubs and everything that was cut down, and we've had that moved off and...
Okay, let me tell you what my real concern is.
Okay.
And these are all subdivisions within the CBG area, okay? You had the mayor mention one person that would ask for a bridge. But we don't do bridges in private parks, so that's why they don't have them. So, we typically don't spend governmental money on private concerns. One HOA, very similar to you all, went and knocked on doors, door to door, and they did an annual assessment of $75,000, in addition to what they were already paying. And they redid both of the swimming pools, the tennis courts, and the clubhouse. This is what they did on their own, okay? We've had another subdivision that come and asked for a sound wall, okay? Which we didn't do. Which is in the CBG area. We have another subdivision within the CBG who's assessment is probably similar to y'all's. And they've cleaned up their back deck, got people paying. I mean, this is what they've... And they're saving money now to build them a new clubhouse. And my concern is there are a lot of infrastructure needs that need to take place. And I kinda like to see what y'all gonna do, okay? In order to support what y'all need to be... I noticed that the playground area is fenced, it's locked.
Yes.
You know, we have an older population in Missouri City. How many kids gonna really use it? You know? How you gonna maintain it if we did do this? How you gonna ma... If you couldn't maintain it up to now, how you gonna maintain it if we gave you the money? Okay, that is a serious consideration.
Right.
Well, the other situation is if we gave you $37,000, one is you couldn't go out and buy the equipment. Because if you make it a private park, it becomes a part of a quasi-park within the Missouri City Park System, which means that we got to bid it out through the city purchase department. It has to be done under the Bacon-Davis Act, which says that the people that do the work have to be paid a certain amount of money. So, that money can go down real thin, real quick, and everything. So, that's what I just wanna kinda get an idea, you know, in terms of, help you with your situ... I'll do anything I can to help you, okay?
One thing about the gates being locked is because some of the equipment out there, we didn't want any of the kids to go out there and get hurt. Because some of it, we had to have it removed, because it wasn't, you know, they were falling apart.
Go and just tear it down and let the kids go play in the dirt.
Oh, well.
Never thought about that. I mean, I may not be critical, but just looking at it from a different way, okay?
Let me, Jack, please, I have a question. With $108 annually, the residents find it's even hard to come up with $108. But I think if we get funding for the playground, I think that would attract a lot of people, and that will give them the assurance that at least the money, the $108, is going somewhere. But they are holding back, because they feel that they are not getting anything from the homeowners association. They are not getting anything done.
The $108 that they're getting.
Okay, but I think if we get this approved, thank God, we have gone one step up the ladder by having it conceded so far up to this point. So, we're just praying to God now that we get the green light now, to have a cap on it, that we receive this. And I think that will help our neighborhood to grow, and more participation. We'll have more people coming into our neighborhood. There are a lot of kids now, they have nowhere to go, nowhere to play. They're playing all on the streets.
We got a big old park right down the street from y'all. So, but let me ask you something else. You honor your contracts that you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Then your homeowner's assessment is a contractual contract that you made when you bought your house with your D restriction. You all need to enforce your D restriction and collect your money, okay? That's what you really, really need to do, okay? I looked at your end and balance, I think it's a little bit more than $79,000, you know? I ain't gonna tell you how you spend your money, but the fact of it, I would sure put a lot of it on finding somebody to collect our money.
Right. We have somebody now.
I go to Hunters Glen, and guess what? I counted the Lexus's, the BMWs.
Right, right, that's my thing.
Okay, I mean, let's be real. I mean, we got to reach down and help ourselves, okay? And this conversation is not about... That decision of what we do comes with the next meeting. But really, that's not gonna fix your problem in the long run. And that's what I'm talking about. And I've had the same conversation, honestly, with some other subdivisions, okay? And they really changed, and really... But that $108 is a contract. I honor my contract, okay? And you need to make them honor the contract? honor my contract, okay, and you need to make them honor the contract? Might mean you might have to file some liens on a few people. Eventually, you'll get the money when they sell their house.
We've got, we've got an attorney that's working on those.
It's a business.
He's brought out a lot.
It's a business. And, you know, another thing, people have stopped coming in here poke-mouthing, and I'm gonna be very honest about that. Lift yourself up, have your own problem. I'm not talking about you, but that helps the neighborhood even better, okay, when you do that, okay? But, but those were just the questions, questions that I had. You know, personally, it's gonna be really hard when we turn down all these other people when I know another subdivision not too far from you all that has knocked on doors and did assessment and brought, and is probably the most improved subdivision in this whole city.
We did that.
And can I say that?
And they turned it down.
Right, we did.
They didn't want to pay.
Oh, no, I know you can't make them, but you can get your assessment.
We tried that. We tried that last year, and we tried to raise it $92 to make it 200, but it did not pass.
I understand.
And it's been 108 for 40 years, so.
But I would get real serious, I would get real serious about collecting on the contract though.
Can I just say something? I live in Hunters Glen One and Two, and I'm proud to live there. I purposely bought my home there about 20 years ago, and so I have seen the deterioration of the community in that area, and I still choose to live there. I don't choose to pack up and move to Sienna or to Sugar Land and some of the places that I've been recommended to move. And so with that being said, our HOA has worked diligently to, you know, increase the...
Succession fees, right.
And we have been unsuccessful due to the fact that a lot of our community over there in that area, they're renters, and so therefore is trying to make that communication with the actual homeowners has been a task. And we're not here to, you know, beg for money or anything like that. We've gone through the process of submitting an application for a grant that is available to communities that would need assistance. And it's not that we like need and die hard need of this. We're asking that you would invest in our community as we have invested in the city of Missouri City, and we have supported your decisions on some of the things that you guys have thought were investments of us. And so we're asking that you would consider receiving this grant on our behalf and allow us to, as well as put our funds in as well to match that so that we can have this for our community children. And I have seven kids, and so I know there's nowhere, I can't allow my children to walk up the street and cross several main streets to get to that city park. That's a driving area, and some of our families are limited to transportation. And so that is an easier route for our kids to go to where we feel more comfortable and safe for our kids to play. And there are lots of children in that particular community, as well as even our renters families that are moving into that particular area. They have small children, and they do need somewhere to play, and that's close to their homes. And we're just asking that y'all would just take into consideration that we've never asked y'all for anything. We're not begging for money. We're just asking you guys to consider investing in 200 Glen One and Two as a new investment in support of our community.
Are you on the board?
No, sir. I'm just a member.
She's an active member.
Yes.
So what now?
I'm just an active resident.
Active member.
Oh.
At our HOA meeting.
Well, you ought to get on that board. You'd be good.
I think they're doing fabulous.
You'd be, you would be good.
So I'm here to support my community as well as Missouri City, and I always want the best, you know, for anybody. I would, I would fight for anyone's community that has children in it regardless of what the socioeconomics are. It's just in the best interest, it's the right thing to do, you know, and you guys have the power and the authority to make those levers as you see fit. And that's why we're asking that you consider that as an opportunity to sow seed into our community.
I just had, going back to Latoya, again, my issue has always been the city liability issue, and E. Joyce, can you all speak to that? Because I know that's been my main concern, because this is an unprecedented thing. And so, you know, voting for anything like this, I would not want us or you all as an HOA to be put in harm's way. I know you all stated that you'd be willing to sign an agreement with the city, but overall, I don't know what that fully means legally as to what we would be faced with in the future. Say, for instance, someone states they denied me access to the park, and I know that the HOA would be responsible for returning those dollars to us. Is that correct?
Sure, and I'm happy to provide legal advice. If you all would like to waive the attorney-client privilege to have it provided here, you can certainly take a vote and do that, or we can go to the back, and I'm happy to provide you all with additional information.
This is a public hearing right now. We're not making...
It is, correct, but...
We're not making a decision.
Correct.
I move that we waive the attorney-client privilege.
I second that.
So she can answer the question?
Yeah. All those in favor? Motion carries.
That way she can answer the question.
Okay, I'd like to add something else. The gates will not be locked once we get the playground of the park.
They're only locked at this particular time for the safety of the community and the children, and so it would be essentially something that is accessible to the public.
Yeah, the swings are not operable, and the sufficing is not good, so it may cause harm to the children if they get in there also. That's the reason why we have to lock.
Someone that has taken a razor or something and put...
Oh, yeah, I have to...
So we lock the gates so they wouldn't go on there and play on it and get hurt.
Yeah, not, not just you all, but just about anything that I discuss up here, I physically go look at it, whether it's zoning, a housing problem, I pass by it, and I know where Georgia's place is, but I still went by and got a picture in my mind what it was about.
Just, just to answer, to answer the question, as you all know, there's always, folks, there's always a potential that someone might sue, whether or not they, they will be victorious or successful. You know that there's always the chance that someone could sue. What we could do, though, in this case, is to require the HOA to indemnify the city, but they would need to be able to provide the resources if the city is sued to defend the city and essentially pay for any potential costs that the city might incur if there are damages that occur and the city is held liable.
That include insurance requirements?
I'm sorry?
That includes insurance requirements?
Um, insurance requirements could...
But we would determine what the limits would be?
We could, we could provide an agreement.
We'd have to make sure the limits are right.
Okay. We could provide or require an agreement that could include that, but it would, it would be up to what you all would be willing to, you know, if you, if you want to go that route.
What's the condition of the pool?
The pool, I've had several people come out, and they said, as far as now, we can't open the pool. Later on, in the wintertime, we'll have to have it resurfaced. But at this point, we can have it open this summer.
How you gonna pay for that?
Um, we're looking at getting some people in to help us get it done, fundraisers to go ahead and try and get it open.
And you realize that that pool is inside that park, it becomes a public pool?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
To anybody?
Another liability.
And just, and not, not necessarily liability, but just another legal consideration that you might want to think about as well, is that because you all would be investing in what is essentially a private, private property? The city would need some sort of right to kind of enter onto the property to get back, let's say, it, it doesn't become, or it becomes private again and is not open to the public, maybe some sort of lien or some sort of documentation that would allow the city to recoup what was invested in, in the improvement?
Yes, if you give us the conditions under which we should, how we should run the playground, how we should use that funds, we definitely will adhere to whatever the conditions that are given to us, because we, we want to uphold that. We, we want to ensure that we could again get it in the future. We want to make sure that what is given to us, it's, it's been put into use appropriately. We use it wisely so that you can be pleased with us.
And what the outcome is of the playground.
So we will do everything in our endeavor. Just give us the guidelines, the conditions, what is it that you expect, how you expect us to use the fund, and just tell us what to do, and we will do exactly as you have, tell us to do.
For clarification, Mayor and Council, the pool is not included in this grant application.
Yeah, but it's inside the park.
It's not separate.
The pool is not inside the pool.
No, the pool is not inside, the pool is separate.
But I have...
Yeah, the pool is separate. The pool has no connection with the pool.
Same meets the bounds. Same meets the bounds.
It has a gate around it, it has a gate around it, which can be secured, but locked.
But is it considered part of the park?
No, no.
It's one property, right?
Playground area, you cannot get today.
No, 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 no. The HOA owns that one tract of land, do they not?
Yes.
It's a park. It may be separated by fence people, but that's one piece of property, and that park that you own becomes a public park that you own, including the pool. Including the pool.
And we've also had some other subdivisions that would like to use the pool and the playground also.
They wouldn't even have to ask you.
Right.
It would become public.
I mean, they, they came to us and asked us, when will it be open?
HOA fees and all.
Well, this is a public hearing, so we're not making any decision tonight anyway.
No, I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay. Because all we're doing is considering all the applicants that made applications to us, so. There a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please note that the action plan is available on the city's website, as well as a hard copy is available in the Development and Services Office, and residents who would like to make written comments can do so before May 15. Thank you.
And if I may, just one more quick point. In terms of use of the funds, the funds cannot be used for maintenance, so they would only be able to use those funds for the improvements themselves.
And that was one of my questions, how you gonna, if we did it, how you gonna maintain it?
Yeah. All right. There were no appointments. Item Nine, authorizations. Nine A is consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with a tennis professional for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Move that down.
Second.
This is, this is only coming before us because of the amount of money.
That's correct, sir.
But I have a second concern that I do want to get on the record with.
Okay.
We have two tennis courts in Fundon Park. We need, if we gonna pay somebody to run a program, we need activities that's over there on that public park on a scheduled basis. Now, they'll never start coming unless we show up over there. That's just the way I feel about it.
Is it in good enough shape to do that?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. The courts are fine.
We're sending you over there.
All right.
House member, I know you previously made that comment, and I know Jason had looked into it, Shane as well, so Shane, can you address the council member's suggestion?
Mayor, Council, how are y'all? We've done some free programming over there.
How many?
I guess we've done two now, free camps over there.
How long the rec center been open?
Rec Center's been open a little over five years.
We can do better than that. We can do better than two.
Okay. If you want programming in that park or any other park for that matter, we can do that. It's going to, I mean, if it might be a separate contract with a different tennis instructor, that tennis instructor, but...
You may not go there but for an hour. If somebody show up, we're there for them. If they don't show up, they can't say that we didn't offer it to them. We got two public tennis courts over there. Okay, and I've been making this fuss, this is not the first time. We should make the effort to do that.
Are we doing a Fundon Park?
Uh, yeah, Fundon Park. We own those tennis courts. We built those tennis courts.
I know. Are we doing programs over there?
No, that's what I'm talking about.
We've done some programs over there.
You've done two?
Instructor works off an 80/20 split, so if we're doing free programs over there, it's a different outreach model than what we're doing right now with this instructor, obviously.
You got it.
And I still love you, Shane, so don't, don't, don't take it out of context.
Actually, I'm taking off tomorrow, so don't come back.
We don't send Jerry over. Coach White.
They're over there playing.
Coach White's gonna go, all right, there been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item Nine B is to consider ratifying the execution. I'm in a local agreement with Fort Ben County for the use of the county property for MCTX vest. This is after the fact, huh?
Yeah.
So after the fact?
The most government thing you'll do all night.
Yeah, is there a motion?
So move. Second. They need, they need the record in the files.
I do second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Item Ten, ordinances. Ten A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending the general budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018. Transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, amending the authorized staffing for fiscal year 2018, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such amendments, making certain findings, and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
There a motion?
So move.
Second. Now, some Boney made a second.
Move that money around.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Have a seat. Item Ten B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 10, animals of the Missouri City Code. Amending regulations regarding the abandonment, surrender, and ownership of certain animals, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
There a motion?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Have a seat. Item 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Texas Department of Transportation for overtime activities by law, by law enforcement to reduce the incidence of traffic collisions, injuries, and fatalities, agreeing to provide matching funds and containing other provisions related thereto.
There a motion?
So move.
Now, some Boney made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, some Emery made a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Have a seat.
Keep up the good job, Chris.
It's that money.
Item 11C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting bylaws for the Community Development Advisory Committee and repealing all other resolutions in conflict herewith.
There a motion?
So move.
Second. Aren't you on that committee, Boney?
Yeah.
Y'all got no bylaws?
Yeah, we do.
All right. There been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Have a seat.
Giving y'all a chance to say something.
Item 11D.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting economic development goals and an economic development plan and repealing all other resolutions in conflict herewith.
There a motion?
So move. Second.
Now, some Emery made a motion, and Council Boney made a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 12, the City Council announcement. Chris?
Hello, Emery, please.
Gary?
Uh, yes, I was in Home Depot this week, and I met two representatives from FEMA, and they're at Home Depot through Saturday explaining to people, asking people questions and information about flood insurance and emergency preparedness. After they leave Home Depot on Saturday, they will move over to Lowe's and will be there for two weeks. And so, so if any people, you know, want to go by and talk to them, they're there for you. I think we're gonna get communications to put out something. I gave the reps' number to the city manager to contact them, which would at least help get the word out. I mean, we're...
There's Lowe's now. There's a group at Lowe's.
At Home Depot to now, to Saturday.
I gave Stacy the brochure that...
They'll be at Lowe's starting Sunday.
Now, there's a group at Lowe's right now.
Well, I just talked to the guy, and he told me he wouldn't be at Lowe's on Sunday.
It's a different group.
Well, that's good.
I gave the brochure to Stacy. It's the same kind of group. It's from the Region Four Center.
Well, that's good. Well, we just need to...
Telling people how to fill out the application.
Get the information out there.
Or, you probably know it.
Lowe's and, and Home Depot, the only two?
The only two in the city.
Suppliers?
Probably so. They're getting people who are coming in buying...
Buying stuff.
Supplies to rehab their houses. You got anything?
No.
Um, MCTX was good. I think the staff did a great job organizing it. A lot of work. We appreciate you. I just wish the residents would come out and participate in such a wonderful event, but thank you, Anthony and team, for, for participating and making it a great success.
Well, we kind of had a conflict in that Sienna had an event going on at the same time that I heard 3,000 people attended.
Yeah.
Well, there was a conflict.
The one in Sienna.
Easy going.
The same time. They had dispatch addicts.
And we still got more, more residents, though.
No, they had dispatch addicts.
Yeah.
As a following.
Mayor, we're working on it. As you know, our event was planned well before theirs was even on the map, so that was something that came up after, and we're trying to do a better job in making sure that they knew, and we knew they knew that we were having our event, but they moved forward in establishing theirs. When we're talking about collaboration, collaboration is not just within the confines of Missouri City, but the entire region. And I think one of the things we've been trying to do is to work with all of our partners, whether that's Sugar Land, Fort Ben County, and others, to let, that we respect each other's events, so it's not a conflict, because in the end, we want all of our residents to benefit from that. So as we move forward, we'll make sure that those partners are well aware of our activities, and hopefully they'll respect those dates.
Who was the sponsor of the Sienna?